All right, welcome everyone to the Monday, June 5th City Council meeting. Before we start the meeting, I would invite you to join Councilwoman Ward for a prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, as we meet here this evening to serve our community, help us to use our resources wisely to represent our citizens fairly and to make decisions that promote the common good. In doing so, help us to recognize our responsibility to the past and the future and the rights of both individuals and community. As we work together on behalf of all who live in the City of Jefferson, may we gain strength and wisdom from one another through reason and compassion. Please keep our public safety personnel and armed forces safe as they protect the citizens of our city and our country. Let us all remember those who have lost their lives protecting us and our freedoms and thank those who continue to do so. And please bring comfort to all those who have been victims of the recent tragic events in London. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I'll call to order the Monday, June 5th, 2017 City Council meeting. Mrs. Powell, roll call please.
Fitzwater.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Hussey.
Here.
Kemna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Here.
Item three, adoption of agenda with one change, adding item 7B, Mr. Gary Wilbers, to presentations from staff consultants and invited guests. Is there a motion to amend the agenda such?
Second.
Second? Any further discussion about, do we need to have a motion or a vote on the amendment or just?
Adopt the amendment.
Adopt the amendment. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. Item A, recognizing Evan Rackers, winner of the Sketch Day, Jefferson City Public Schools' Mayor's Choice Award. And he was not able to come tonight. Is Charlotte Middleton here? I don't think she was either. But we were going to have our Mayor's Choice Sketch Day winner here in attendance. And I believe he had to work late and was not able to make it. So I'll just give a quick rundown on that. Is every year now, for the last three years, we've done Mayor's Choice Award winner. The last two award winners are hanging in the mayor's office. You can see them as you walk down the hallway on the office wall, the last two winners. The first one was the Missouri State Penitentiary and then last year was a renovated property near the downtown area. And this year Evan's piece was the Missouri River with the bridge in the background. It was a beautiful sketch and very impressive. He used a lot of contrast in the piece. It's very beautiful. And seeing the beauty of the Missouri River, I just felt that I was very drawn to the piece for the artistic value, for the subject matter, knowing that the riverfront is so important to our community and being a river city. And really felt that was a great choice. So want to take a moment to congratulate Evan Rackers and his sketch. And then also all of the students that participated in Sketch Day. Art is very important. And Heritage Day awards, it was something that we had here in council chambers and recognized the students that achieved some of the award winners in all of the different forms of Sketch Day and also some of the heritage essays and other multimedia presentations. So very proud of those students. So congratulations again to Evan Rackers and sorry he was not able to be here, but in the next couple of weeks you'll be able to see his award-winning piece hanging permanently, a copy of it hanging in the mayor's office. Item five, public hearings, there are none. Item six, appointments by the mayor, we have none this evening. Item seven, presentations from staff consultants and invited guests. We'll start with item A, Mr. Dave Sylvester from MoDOT regarding the Buckle Up Phone Down Challenge.
I love those chairs. Thank you very much, Councilman Prather and Councilman Mahalovich. I think I thank you for the invitation along with Mayor Turgeon. This is an action that the Missouri Department of Transportation in conjunction with the Missouri Coalition for Roadway Safety have embarked upon. And it takes into account two things that drivers can do to help protect themselves and safety as they're in the car. And buckle up, phone down. Anybody? Nobody? Thank you. A couple folks. I know you can do it. By the end, we're gonna all do this, so. There we go. Very good. Okay. So that's step one of actually being able to do it. Then we'll get into actually taking the pledge here in a little bit. So giving you a couple of handouts, I'm gonna talk about some of the information here. So like I said, these are the two things that we as drivers, as operators of the motor vehicle, can do to help protect ourselves and others on the road. First, buckling up, that protects ourselves, and putting down that cellphone, that's the distraction. The Missouri Highway Patrol has estimated that there have been over 2,200 accidents that involve distracted driving or cellphones in 2015. And that's just an incredible number. The AAA, the American Automobile Association, reports that texting increases the chances of a car accident by 50%. 50% alone. And we have reported that by the time somebody takes to read a text, when you look down and read that text, the time it takes to read it, comprehend it, at 55 miles per hour, you've driven the length of a football field. That's 100 yards, 300 feet. That's your eyes off the road, not paying attention to what's going around you, but instead reading that device that's in front of you. From seatbelt aspect, the Missouri Coalition for Roadway Safety has also reported that without a seatbelt, you have a 1 in 30 chance of a fatality if in a crash, 1 in 30. If you're wearing a seatbelt, 1 in 1,200-plus chance. So obviously, it's very well documented that a seatbelt does save lives. In 2016, there were 684 accidents or fatalities that involved a passenger or a driver. 62% of these were unbuckled. MoDOT is leading this effort with the Buckle Up Phone Down. We have gone to a mandated no cellphone usage while operating a vehicle, any vehicle, whether it's a dump truck, whether it's a car, whether it's a motor grader, anything that has an engine. We put the phone down and we don't answer it. And we've also had a seatbelt, mandatory seatbelt usage in all our equipment, including some of those heavy pieces of equipment I just mentioned. And we've had that for about 10 years or so or longer. So we're leading this effort and we're challenging others to do the same. And I'm here to the council tonight to kind of challenge the city. Mayor Turgeon has already taken this on a personal level, taken the pledge. I understand Councilman Kemna has also taken the pledge, I found out tonight. So thank you both.
And Councilwoman Ward.
Councilman Ward, very good. Anyone else personally taken? Councilman Mahalovich? Okay, so you've got four folks that can show you how to take the pledge and will be willing to help also. But as an organization with a city, as an agency, as an entity, a government entity, I want to name a couple of agencies that actually helped us. Coal County. Coal County has signed up and taken this pledge. So surely the city can join Coal County in this effort. That's more of a plea than it is kind of anything else. So Coal County, St. Louis Zoo, AAA, Central Bank, and Mayor Hallmark has taken this pledge. So how can you do this? How can you join? How can you be a part of this campaign on a personal basis or as a business? Many of you are business owners and you have fleet or you have vehicles that are part of your business. How can you do this? You can go to our website, mo dot org. You can look for the banner that has the Buckle Up Phone Down symbol. It's the same symbol that's on this card, the two, the red, the blue thumb up and the red thumb down. You can take selfies. Anybody know how to take selfie here?
Maybe.
Anyone? No one? Okay. You can take selfies and upload them. And I believe our mayor, our good mayor of this city, has done just that. And you can challenge other individuals and organizations to get involved, which is why I'm here tonight, is to challenge the city, challenge you as individuals and challenge you as business owners or parts of organizations to help us with this campaign. Help us reduce fatalities, distracted driving, wear the seatbelt. The lowest number of usage we have in seatbelt is amongst teenagers, the youngest drivers, the ones that are just learning. And coincidentally, the highest number of distracted driving cases we have is also with our youngest drivers too. So I appreciate the time that you've given me on your agenda tonight. I won't take any more time. It's a very simple process to do. You can go to the website. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So basically, mo dot org for those that are tuning in here. And then there's the Buckle Up Phone Down link at mo dot org.
There'll be a banner at the top. There's many banners, but just let it cycle through. You'll see the Buckle Up Phone Down banner. You can click on that. There's all kinds of materials that are there that you can share with your coworkers, share with your family, share with your organization. There's a lot of statistics out there also. And the Missouri Coalition for Roadway Safety has been a great partner in this, as has the Missouri State Highway Patrol.
Well, thank you, Mr. Sylvester. And that's where I first learned about it, was through the Coalition of Roadway Safety and learning what MoDOT was doing to promote this across the state of Missouri. And we appreciate what you're doing here in our central district. And this is really life-saving. This is definitely very important and it's something that maybe we don't think about as much on a daily basis, but these conversations need to be had. And that's why this is great that you're doing this kind of a PR movement to remind people to have those talks with their friends, with their families, and make sure that they are buckling up and putting the phone down. So, and it's very easy. It's asking you to wear your seatbelt every time and also to put the phone down and especially with hands-free technology, it says to make sure and use that. So when people see me talking to myself, I'm probably using hands-free and that's okay. So, but it's very important to make every effort to be safe and this is definitely life-saving. So thank you again. And I know there were a couple of questions earlier that we had. One of them is, when you sign up, the difference between signing up an individual versus a business? So are they, is it the same link for both?
If you're signing up as an individual, you can do it online. I've done that and many of you have too. If you're gonna sign up as a business, we'll contact you, I think, with some information, some stuff to help you put things up around the building, your office, some other things that will help get that word out. So we have some paraphernalia, some flyers and stuff that can help spread that message.
Great. And it's very easy because it's simply asked really, like you mentioned, you know, your name, your phone number, your email. It's not a lot of, it's not very lengthy. It takes about two minutes or less to sign up to take the pledge. And then it gives you the information to share. And really what this is about sharing, so it kind of started with, you know, at the level of having the mayor and the city council take the pledge. And thanks to those who've already taken it, and I anticipate that the rest of the council would do the same. And the next step would be, like you mentioned, Coal County's taken the pledge, but for the City of Jefferson to do that as well. And we can figure out the best way for us to communicate this with our employees. We can have you talk with our city administrator, Mr. Kroll, with our police chief, Schrader, as far as how to get the word out that we can get these links to all of the city employees so they can share with their own families and their own friends too and take the pledge personally as well.
We'd be happy to help with any communication if the city decides to go that way. We've had to communicate it to over 5,200 employees in our organization. You know, and as you would expect, it meets with some resistance. But the thing we talk about with our folks that work out on the roads, on the highways, is what are the one thing that makes you nervous when you're out there? And it's the people that are driving through the work zones and they're on their cellphone or they're texting as they go through there. And when you lay that out to our folks and lay that out to our employees, they get the safety aspect of not operating a vehicle with a device. And so I think that's just some of the things that we can help with communication if that's the path the city wants to go down.
Great. We would appreciate it.
Great.
And anything we can do to raise awareness because, you know, there are two things here. And one is wearing the seatbelt. And Missouri, of course, doesn't have a primary law, but we need to stand strong. And as leaders in our community, we can take that stand and say, even though there's not a primary law, meaning it's not enforced unless there's another violation, it's still important every time, no matter what. And we can stand up for that. And the second thing is the law that says, you know, if you're under 21, that's where texting is banned. Doesn't ban over 21, which is frankly completely ridiculous. So it's, that's a personal opinion coming from me and I think a lot of people would probably agree. So like you stated, it's just deadly. So even though it's not a law, it doesn't mean we can't take a strong stand and do everything in our power because it's not safe, not only for us, but for everybody out there. So, thank you. Does council have anything, any other comments to add? Any questions? And I know you have some others here from MoDOT. Thank you Natalie for being here as well. And why don't we get a picture of council here? And we're gonna do the Buckle Up Phone Down and we're gonna get a picture so that we can do what this is really about, which is sharing and getting PR out about this. So let's all take our Buckle Up Phone Down picture.
I was gonna take a picture.
I know, but that's why I'm like.
Mark had both his up. Mark thought he was the funds.
Council, you know, we need to do is a selfie in the power of purple. So I think we're, everybody's purple. Okay, and now decide, power in purple cell, so you don't get that up again.
Councilman Mahalovich asked me to mention about the app. Any AT&amp;T users' cellphones, there is an app out there, and I don't have it on the tip of my tongue right now, but you can actually set, download this app and you can set your phone to, basically, it's called Drive Mode, all one word. And it will detect when you're going 15 miles per hour or more and it just shuts your phone off. So no vibration, you know, because even if you put it on silent mode, you can still hear the vibration. So that may be the tempting part of your psyche, but there's no vibration, it just shuts off. Now, if somebody calls you and they call you twice within a two-minute timeframe, the phone will ring. And it does kind of give you that signal, okay, this is important. And that's something that we tried to tell our staff, is that if you get a couple of phone calls very quickly in succession, somebody's probably really trying to get ahold of you. Pull over, find a safe place to pull over, make that phone call to find out what's going on. Because it might be a sick kid, maybe an emergency of some sort. For us, we deal with the Highway Patrol and other law enforcement, maybe something going on on the road that somebody's trying to notify us. So it is a free app. I'm sure there are others out there if you have other carriers. But yes, it's very helpful. I use it. If you're, it will actually send a text back to somebody that calls and says, "I'm driving. I'll call you back when I can." So it's very, very useful. And that's AT&amp;T.
Well, those are some great tips. Please keep sharing tips with us as you have them and we'll get them out and communicate them as much as we can. And what we're talking about doing here is one of the most important things that we will really ever do as council, as a council, because it's very important, life-saving. Thank you again, Mr. Sylvester.
Thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Thanks. And, all right. Item B, we have Mr. Gary Wilbers with us this evening to give us an update on Special Olympics Missouri. You recently had an exciting groundbreaking ceremony.
Yes.
Very exciting.
I'm gonna pass out. I want you to, if you would, take one of each if you would.
Well, thank you. We're looking forward to hearing an update.
Well, as you know, we had the groundbreaking, exciting times. Within a few weeks, we should see some gravel moving. Now, we won't really see dirt because that's all gravel out there, but we're gonna get started. The contracts have been let, the contractors letting all those know. Our building, a 34,000 square foot building with a gymnasium will be built, along with our track and our field. We are still working on raising about $2.1 million to finish some of our back areas, some of our back competition fields that will be there, practice fields, those type of events there. So some of the things that I'm passing out to you just as a little bit, you may know people that are out in the community, a little postcard that you can share with them. One thing I want to share with you tonight is, there's still a mistake in of what the facility really will be. And there's been a lot of information out there and I want to share that with the council and then as you're talking to people, they'll know too real quickly. There's really three legs to the stool. The first leg, of course, it's a training facility. And the best way to approach that is, it's like an Olympic training facility for our state of Missouri athletes throughout the whole state of Missouri that's in Special Olympics. They'll come train for specific sports or they may train for multiple sports. Our goal is to have 30 camps a year, once we get fully operational. And so those will be people coming in from a specific area or they could be coming in around the state. It could be a team that's coming in, trying to learn some more sports that they can add in their area. Or it could be that they're coming in, flag football's one of our new sports, only about two years old. So we may have them come in around the state to learn about flag football so then they can go back in their area and start flag football in that area. But it's only a training facility. So don't confuse it with the state outdoor games that will be held here this fall. Those could still be held here, but they won't be held at that facility because it's an Olympic training facility. The second leg of that stool is, it's a leadership component. That's why it's Training for Life Campus. And the leadership component, we had our first two graduates last week down at Springfield at MSU that graduated from our Athlete Leadership Program. We call it ALPS for short. But of course, a lot of our athletes don't go to college, don't do those things, but they're learning skills in leadership. We had a graduate in Communications and I'll be honest, I can't remember what the other one was, but two graduates that graduated from the program. So they're able to go out and speak on their own behalf for Special Olympics. And there's no better speaker than having an athlete be able to speak on that. So we'll share that and we'll have training there for them to continue to do that and grow so they can go back to their communities and be leaders in their community. One of the stats I always tell people, 57% of Missouri Special Olympic athletes work in the workplace. Compared to our population that's IDed, it's 10%. So it shows that it makes a difference because they make that difference. I'm going out with my golf buddy tomorrow, Keith, and we're gonna start practicing for regional golf. Keith works over at Culver's. He makes a difference by, number one, him working, it helps him, but it also helps Culver's. And if you go in there ever, you'll not know a stranger because Keith doesn't know a stranger. Does great customer service. So that's the second leg of the stool. And then that third leg of the stool is, we have the training, we have the leadership, but then we have the Healthy Athletes Initiative. And this one's probably the most exciting because it's what's gonna make us really the only unique facility in the world at the time we're done for this facility. And it's gonna be held right here in Jefferson City. And that Healthy Athlete side of it is, it allows our athletes to get some of their healthy feet, teeth, eyes, all those things that you, we, and I may take for granted, but they don't always get. We just had the state games down at MSU and we had athletes getting glasses and being sized. And we wonder why they can't catch the ball or see something. I had an athlete that had got cavity fixed, those type of things. They get those, they test them, they find out what the problem is, and when they go back to their community, they're able to get those things fixed. So in this facility, we will have exam rooms and we will be examining them on those different disciplines that's there. So the biggest thing is, it's gonna be unique. It's gonna be different. There's nothing else like it in the, you know, world, so it's gonna be really a showpiece for us. So we're trying to get that last leg. The reason I'm here is kind of let you know about that. Because if you know someone that's available, we still have tax credits available for as little as a donation of $1,000, you can get tax credits back. If you know someone that's interested, please let them know. But probably the biggest thing is to know what's coming into your community. We've already raised $16 million for this project and two more million will allow us to complete it. And I don't know about you, but it'd be a shame to open the facility and still have something to work on. So it's my work this next kind of seven, eight months is to complete this thing and hit that goal because I want the athletes to walk into a completed facility. So I appreciate the time. I wanted to share a little bit with you, the information you have. We'll give you a little more details on that. The main thing is, most of you know me, you can get ahold of me anytime, but please, share the message. You may know someone, it's kind of like I told my board. You hear someone and they're having lunch with you and they're getting worried about the end of the year and, you know, they've had a good year? Well, tell them we have benefits for them that can help them. And we try to share that message with the tax credits. Because a lot of people don't know how those work and how they can benefit them. And the nice thing about the tax credits, you can be an individual or a business. You do not have to be a business owner to take advantage. So anyone that says, "Well, I'm not a business owner," it doesn't apply to me. Yes, it does. And so you can take advantage too. I'll take any questions. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbers. And I hope that tonight you're able to gain some more support to get that final piece of fundraising that's very exciting for our community. But to have something that's like nothing else in the country, really in the world, right here in Jefferson City, is a really big deal for our community and for our state. So keep up the good work with that. It's amazing to see the athletes and see the look on their faces and the excitement and what's getting ready to happen right here in our community. So thank you for your work on that. Does council have any questions or comments? Great. Well, thank you for being here. We'll look through the information.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And get the word out. And I know also there was the law enforcement torch run, was at the Capitol last week.
Yeah.
And there were several athletes there that participated and that was exciting to see them. They ran farther than I could have that day.
Yeah. And remember, the games will be here. I can't remember if it's the, it's in the September, early October. If you get a chance, come out. That'll give you a real good taste of what's gonna go on for the event. All you have to do, come to opening ceremonies, our website has it. I'll try to let the mayor know so she can pass the information. But those games are right here in Jefferson City and they'll be held this fall.
That's great. Well, let's reach that goal for Special Olympics.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. All right. Item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. And we have four standing committees. You can find the committee schedule and date and times at JeffersonCityMo.gov. Would any committees like to make announcement? Councilman Mahalovich?
The Finance Committee meets this Thursday at 7:30 in the room across the hall.
Thank you. Any other committee announcements? Okay. And I have a few announcements. One, there will be an eclipse meeting this Wednesday, June 7th, at 5:30 PM at the Capitol. So if you want to learn everything that's going on for one of the top places to watch the eclipse in the entire country, which is right here in Jefferson City for the Capitol Eclipse Event, you may want to attend that meeting at the Capitol Rotunda. And the eclipse itself, of course, is August 21st. If you don't have that on your calendar, you should. Something else is, a group that we're working with for Relay for Life, Relay was just over the weekend, by the way. That was an amazing event for Jefferson City. Thank you for everyone who participated in Relay. But the American Cancer Society is continuing to raise funds through what they're calling Power in Purple. And it's a kind of a friendly competition between Coal County and Boone County. I know we have Councilwoman Wiseman and Chief Schofield are part of our Power in Purple Team. And we are trying to actively fundraise and raise more money than Boone County. So I think that Coal County can come out ahead of that. So part of it is wearing purple, taking selfies, posting it out there, getting the awareness through that. So you saw me take a couple selfies earlier. If anyone didn't get one, see me afterwards and we'll get those out and post and share. And council and Wiseman, I know we have an event coming up this week that we're gonna try to do some fundraising for that.
Yes, we have, on June 7th at 7:00 PM is the hypnotist at Avenue HQ and we're trying to sell tickets. We get part of the proceeds that evening for our team. Doors open at 6:00 PM. You can order tickets online. They're $15. So I believe we're also gonna have a raffle that evening and maybe one of our commissioners will, Jeff, will get hypnotized that evening.
That's the goal. That'll be some entertainment for sure. That'll be some entertainment, for sure, maybe we can get him to pass some kind of rules while we're there, we'll see what we can make happen during that, so. So hopefully, that will be a successful event and a big night, because you can go to the eclipse meeting and then come to the Power in Purple event afterwards. Couple other announcements, Monday, June 19th, at 4:30 PM is the grand opening for the Boys and Girls Club, which is located there, right next to the Lincoln University's campus. So that's the night of our next council meeting, so hopefully, right before council, we'll have a chance to go for the grand opening and ribbon cutting that evening. And of course, we'll have one more meeting before the Big Salute to America festivities, so at the next meeting, we'll likely have some announcements from the organizers of that event. But a few announcements, Saturday night, July 1st, as Carlos reminded me last time, we have the big concert inside the walls, Second Annual. We will have Wynona, Judd is performing Wynona and the Big Noise. Tickets are available at SaluteToAmerica.org. So please come out and support that event, we're really, as we're focusing in on prison redevelopment, having the concert inside the walls is just an amazing event to showcase what can really happen at that venue. And then also, for Salute to America, there's other bands, there'll be a Bee Gees tribute band happening in the downtown area as part of the July 3rd and 4th festivities, and on the night of July 4th, the Gin Blossoms will be playing at the Capitol. So those who remember some 90's rock that enjoy Gin Blossoms will be very excited to hear that they'll be playing for a free concert at the Capitol on, on the night of July 4th. So all kinds of great things, mark your calendars, and spend July 4th holiday over here in Jefferson City. We have the best July 4th celebration out of anywhere that you could possibly go. So those are my announcements, and I think Councilman Kemna has an event also coming up.
Yeah, also at HQ Avenue, where they're having the Relay for Life. Saturday, they're having their second rendition of Talk Jeff City, it's kind of a comedic approach for happenings around town. So they'll be getting together from 3:00 to 7:00 at HQ Avenue. I think it's $5 a show, or you can pay $10, and you can get all three. So that's 3:00 to 7:00 this Saturday at HQ Avenue.
Thank you, right in your ward.
Right next door.
Great. Item B, we have Chief Schofield to talk about Summer Fire School.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe we have a video that they're going to be warming up the projectors for momentarily. And while that's occurring, it's just a very short video. This is the 85th year for Summer Fire School since its inception. Been in Jeff City for about 25 of those years. There'll be hundreds of firefighters, paramedics, investigators, foresters, law enforcement officials, paramedics, EMTs, from all across the state and four other states, Illinois, Indiana, Kansas, and Florida. So they will be here this week, from Wednesday through Sunday, participating in training programs, students, instructors, as well as logistical and support staff. So I think with that, we'll start the video.
Well, thank you, Chief Schofield. I know the importance of training just cannot be understated, it's so important to have training, and they come from all over, and it's really great to have that right here in Jefferson City, that we have the facilities that are available for this kind of train, this level of training.
It is, and I would also mention that we're in partnership with Lincoln University, as well as MU Fire Rescue Training Extension through the university.
Great, well, glad to have everybody here. Any questions of council on that event? Thank you. And item C, we have an open house for the building code. Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Ad Hoc Steering Committee on Building and Construction Codes is going to have an open house, actually a pre, a brief presentation on June 15th at 6 o'clock over on 401 Monroe, which is the police training room, and there'll be a lot of opportunity to ask questions of our building officials about what's in the codes, what are the changes, and things like that. And anyone who's interested in the codes or is in the home building or construction industry is welcome to attend. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And item D, we do have a city council work session next Monday night, right here in council chambers, Monday night, June 12th at 5:30 PM, the discussion of MSP, and we're going to talk about the MSP Master Plan, and kind of give a little history of where we were and where we're going with the future. Of course, now, we're very fortunate that the, the bill regarding MSP redevelopment has passed the House and Senate, so we're working through the details now to hopefully get that passed at the highest level, so that we can start working through that. And we will get an update here from the council. So should be around 5:30 to 7:00 PM, there is 180 years to cover, so hopefully, we won't make it too super long, but actually, it'll be really exciting. It's a great, great time for us to review what, what's been done up to this point, and now what the opportunity is here in front of us now as a city. So we look forward to having that, and it is, of course, a work session, so it is an event that is open. Item nine, or any further announcements? All right, thank you. Item nine, oh, and I did have one other announcement that I didn't write down, but was very excited, was the Jefferson City Jays baseball team won state, and that was a really big deal. I think it's been a lot of years since that happened, and hearing a lot of excitement in the community, and a lot of cheering going around about that. So congratulations to the Jefferson City Jays state champion baseball team. Item nine, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions, all individuals limited to five minutes without exception. We have one signed up this evening, Mrs. Velma Steinman. Oh, I'm sorry, that's under the, I'm on the wrong topic, that's going to be at the end there. Other topics. So we have nobody signed up, actually, under the specific bill or resolution. So on to item 10, consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 11, Bills Introduced 2017-18.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $130,365 agreement with Concrete Solution LLC for the Broadway Sidewalk Project.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this contract will be with Concrete Engineering, excuse me, Concrete Solutions LLC, in the amount of $130,000 and a little bit more. It is for the placement of the sidewalk on Broadway Street. It's a one-block section of sidewalk, and the only block on Broadway, which does not have sidewalk on both sides. This project is funded through the Community Development Block Grant 100%. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, any discussion questions? Thank you. 2017-19.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning 3.25 acres of land addressed as 1732 and 1736 Veth Drive from RS2 Single Family Residential to PUD Planned Unit Development, and approving a preliminary PUD plan for said property.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a rezoning that was referred to the council by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The property is actually two parcels, or two addresses, actually, three parcels, 1732 and 1736 Veth Drive. They're requesting that rezoning from single-family RS2 to a planned unit development, which means the requester has to specify what exactly they plan to do on the property. The property is located off of Veth Drive. You can kind of see here Route C is along the bottom, it's pretty much in the middle of the Veth Drive up to Satinwood. It's right next to the JC Manor, Skilled Nursing Center. There's a couple churches in the area, and the Water District, you might be able to see a little bit over to the left, St. Mary's, just kind of get your bearings, and I believe Cedar Hill Schools to the north also. The zoning, the area around it is all residential. To the left is the RS4 zoning, it is in RS2, and it was zoned in 1969 when it was annexed in as RS2. The JC Manor, which is partially owned by the same requesters or the people that have the option to purchase a property, the JC Manor Skilled Nursing Center also came in as RS2 back in 1969. So they're asking to have that rezoned. The planned unit development will consist of sort of three buildings, a daycare that may be licensed up to 99 children, that's approximately 6,500 square feet. The Skilled Nursing Center, which will have 12 beds, is approximately 8,000 feet, and then also a maintenance building. They're planning on adding only one access point to Veth Drive, and that's actually on the south there. Get my mouse to work, there we go. The other entrance is actually going to be accessing an existing entrance to the north, that JC Manor. So the, the properties will have access to Veth Drive, it's actually just one 24-foot entranceway across the sidewalk that the children use to go up to Cedar Hill. The signing and lighting, and many other aspects of the property would be adhering to the commercial office type of zoning, which is very mild compared to other commercial uses of types of zoning. There was an engineering staff report, they report that the driveway site distance is adequate in both directions. There's only been two non-injury property vehicle accidents in this time period, and that Veth Drive is actually a major collector that is designed and can adequately handle any additional traffic. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. B? Councilman Graham?
When was the last traffic study or count that was done for Veth Drive?
I know the traffic counts are done periodically, I don't have the exact date of one done, but I recall Mr. Bengi in his engineering report talked about the traffic counts back when 179 actually was not in existence, and I want to recall, they were around 4,000 or 5,000 average daily trips a day, and that the road now doesn't have anywhere near that many. The additional number of trips modeled using the Institute for Transportation Engineers' Traffic Generation Guide is estimated at only being 86 to 91 additional trips a day. And also, it was alluded to that many of those trips may already be in existence along the road, because people would be actually going up to the school to either drop their kids off, and they may be going to preschool care now, and then would later go up to the school. So I'm sorry, I do not have an exact count or a date of the count.
Thank you.
Further questions or council comments? Okay, thank you. Item 2017-20.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a Section 5339 Capitol Assistance Grant Agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk stated, this is a grant agreement, working through MODOT, it is actually Federal Transit Administration funds with our, through our Transit Division. The grant funds would use to fund the project, which is actually the next bill down, 27-20, or 2017-21. This grant will install automatic vehicle locators, automatic enunciators onto the, onto our buses, as well as passenger, automatic passenger counters. I'd be, it's a five-year contract, I'd be happy to answer any, any questions the council may have.
Thank you, any questions or comments? All right. 2017-21.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $318,245, 86 cent agreement with Double Map Incorporated to provide equipment and services related to automatic vehicle locators, automatic voice enunciators, and automatic passenger counters.
Mr. Smith?
Thanks the clerk for saying that much better than I did in the previous one, but yes, Madam Mayor, this, this is a, authorizes a contract to spend the grant funds that we just talked about. The difference is, it's 80% funded through the grant, 20% through the capital improvement sales tax portionment to the Transit Division for transit matching. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, any questions or comments? All right. 2017-22.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Surface Transportation Program Funds.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, this, this bill would authorize a grant agreement to expend the remaining portions of the STP funds for the area. The funds are intended to be used to a corridor safety study to identify problems related to the Clark Avenue corridor, which would begin at East McCarty Street and travel through the ramps and Dunkland Street area, onto the area just to the south. The next step in the process, we would, after approval of the grant agreement, and we received notice proceed, we would go out for a request for proposals for a consultant to actually conduct the study. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? All right, 2017, oh, Councilman Henry?
Britt, just for informational purposes, where does that, where are you guys considering that entire corridor? Where does that go from?
The corridor would begin at, we're saying McCarty Street, and proceed south all the way through the Dunkland Street intersection, and be looking at that area, entire area. It's, it's an area that's been concerned, and actually was addressed in the current capital improvement sales tax program. So we're, we're calling this the Problem Identification Stage, to identify exactly what problems we need to work on, and then we plan to move forward with that as, as time goes by.
2017-23.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Gridell Engineering Resources Incorporated in the amount of $61,800 for the design of the South Lincoln Street slope stabilization, and authorizing a supplemental appropriation within the 2015-2016 budget.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, Madam Mayor. As the council may be aware, the South Lincoln Street had a significant slide issue which affected the street, and about 25-foot-deep bank section that is currently settled and moving toward the creek. We became aware of this situation at the end of the most recent rain, rain events. In looking at the issue, we believe that it was a little bit beyond the scope of our engineering capabilities with our own staff, and our resources are dedicated to other projects. An, in local engineering firm, Gridell Engineering Resources, is very familiar with this type of project, and actually did one just similar to it for the county just recently. They are located in close proximity to the site, and we're actually on the site the same day that we became aware of it. This contract would authorize a design contract where we'd begin looking for the solutions to that situation, identifying cost, exact, not exact, cost estimates, and moving the process forward. We do expect it to be a pretty lengthy process through, at least the summer, and we believe that it may become eligible for some federal assistance through the disaster relief for the rainstorms. The representative from Gridell Engineering Resources is, is here if the council would have any question. Staff has requested a suspension of the rules on this item, so we can begin the process to get this thing going. Be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Prather?
Typically, how long does it take for the study to be completed, and then how soon after that could we expect work to be started?
A lot of that, I have to put a little bit of caveat to, is that it depends on what we find. The first initial steps would be drilling and doing some soil evaluations, those would be done in the, in the first three to six weeks, then we begin to identify the solutions. Funding is becoming, going to become a big factor into that, in working with FEMA. So I, I don't have an exact solution, but we're expecting that the project will last at least through the summer.
Thank you, Councilman Henry?
I'll make the motion to suspend the rules for Bill 2017-23.
All right, we have a request to suspend the rules, are there any objections to suspend the rules? Okay, seeing none, we will have third reading of 2017-23.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Gridell Engineering Resources Incorporated in the amount of $61,800 for the design of the South Lincoln Street slope stabilization, and authorizing a supplemental appropriation within the 2015-2016 budget.
Any further discussion on the bill? All right, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hassi?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Thank you, and also thank you to the representatives of Gridell for being here as part of that. Councilman Henry?
Britt, just one quick question, and Lincoln Street is actually completely shut down, correct?
That's correct, it is, it is completely closed at this point. I was actually just out there today, I've been out of town for a few days, and went back to visit it, and we've seen significant continuation of that settlement. And what we do have it blocked off currently, Water Company is actually, was very benefi, very helpful, got in, disconnected a water line, then actually ran through that slide the day of the, the discovery. So we believe that the issue is safe, is, for what it is. But the road is closed, but there is a detour, which is, if you drove it every day, it might be considered inconvenient, but it's not outside the realm of possibility.
Thank you. Item 12, Bills Pending 2017-11.
An ordinance amending Chapter 7 Boards and Commissions of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by modifying member requirements for the electrical and plumbing licensing boards.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Currently, the electrical board, licensing board, has eight members and two voting staff members on it. The plumbing licensing board has five total members, and two of those are voting staff members. This bill would change the makeup of both of the boards, and they'd be similar in nature, Journeymen, and one utility representative from an electric company. City staff would have one ex officio member. Likewise, the Plumbing Licensing Board would have two plumbing contractors, two plumbing journeymen, one water utility representative, and city staff would be ex officio. Basically, the mayor would appoint these members for three years. The chair would be elected from the board themselves. This idea was noticed to all the licensed electricians and plumbers in the city for up to six weeks, and we did not receive any comments. The licensing boards themselves agreed to this and forwarded to the administration committee, and it now comes before you for your consideration. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or deliberation? Okay, we do appreciate all the citizens who serve on these boards, and as always, would ask for people to consider filling out a volunteer profile form if they're interested in serving on this, or any other city boards and commissions. Mrs. Powell, roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2017-12.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri vacating and discontinuing a portion of the 800-block of West Water Street Right of Way.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This portion of right of way that is in question was actually part of the original plat of Jefferson City in 1825. It is in a location which would be difficult, almost impossible, for any public improvements to ever be constructed, given its proximity to the Missouri River Bluff. Staff has reviewed the request to revacate a portion of that right of way, which would revert to ownership of the adjacent property owner, and we are in concurrence with that request. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2017-13. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the city of Jefferson a cost-share agreement for a central Missouri multimodal port project feasibility study.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this bill would authorize an agreement between Callaway County, Cole County, and Jefferson City, as well as the Chamber of Commerce in reference to doing a feasibility study for a port on the Missouri River. Randy Allen, a member of the Chamber of Commerce, is here who would, might have, be able to answer any specific questions the council may have.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, would you like to come to the podium, and that way if council has any questions? Thank you for being here. Would you like to add anything to Mr. Smith's summary?
No, the, we reported last, the last meeting about the project, and we are on the Cole County Commission agenda next Tuesday for consideration of the same thing, and then following with Callaway County.
Great, thank you. Does council have any questions? Councilwoman Wiseman?
Do we have any idea what kind of return on investment, like a port will give this kind of community, or are we just kind of shooting?
Well, that's what this study will show us.
I understand that, but what are, what are we expecting? Are we just expecting to like, hope somebody uses it, or do we have a need for it? Why, I'm asking, why are, why are we doing this study? Is, has somebody asked about it? Is there a need for it in this community, or are we just hoping that by putting in a port, that if we build it, they will come?
There's been a lot of discussion over almost 10 years now, Councilwoman, that a port is needed in the central Missouri area, and then in the recent discussions at the legislature and other venues with the associations that actually deal with soybeans and corn and those kinds of things, that they believe that there would be the need for a facility in the central Missouri area.
So is this expected to basically be used for farming operations?
All commodities, raw materials and manufactured goods as well.
Okay. Then my next question is going to be for Margie. Do we have this in the budget to be able to spend this kind of money on a port study at this point?
That's part of the request tonight, is to amend the budget for the amount that the city is contributing toward the study.
Well, where will that be coming from? What will we be taking that from?
It's out of the general fund balance.
Any further questions for Mr. Smith or Mr. Allen? Councilman Hasi?
Can you put steel beams from a steel fabricator on a river?
Absolutely.
I'm just curious, like, you know, you talk about business and other industry. We've got the Longs here in town that's always struggling. I'm kind of curious.
Absolutely.
If that's the kind of product that can go. And I know a lot of it's with the National Guards proximity and a desire to see it as well. Do you think there's the potential, if we reach the point that a port is justified through the study, it seems as though it's a go-ahead, that the Guard may have resources to put towards a project like that, or federal defense spending or something?
We definitely believe that there are. The Guard Bureau is interested in providing these kinds of resources, both rail and barge. The Guard's been wanting to have barge access for a long time, and so we believe that there is a significant joint use potential there.
Further questions? Council deliberation? Okay. Mrs. Powell, roll call, please.
Hasi?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Bill passes, and thank you, Mr. Allen, for being here. It's, that would be quite
a great thing to have for our community. I hope that, that would eventually come to fruition. Item 2017-15.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $4,755,986 agreement with Sentinel Emergency Solutions and Rosenbauer America LLC for the purchase of seven Rosenbauer Commander fire apparatus to replace the current frontline fleet for the Jefferson City Fire Department.
Chief Schofield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the, as the clerk indicated, this is a contract that would utilize funds that were previously approved through council to purchase seven replacement apparatus, three engines, two rescue squads or rescue pumpers, 101-foot platform, and one 109-foot aerial stick. So those seven trucks would comprise the replacement frontline fleet. It would also allow us to upgrade our reserve fleet and surplus out seven of our older trucks to be utilized to pay down the principal on this financing agreement. Be happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Councilman Henry?
Chief, just one question. How old is our current fleet?
The current fleet is nine years old. It'll be 10 by the time these trucks arrive. It does take about one year for the replacement trucks to be constructed and delivered. And then also of note, the three trucks that we would be surplusing, that are reserve trucks, are both 18, two of them are 18 years old, and the one that is of primary concern, the reserve ladder, is going to be 22 years old by the time we sell it next year.
Further questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. Informal calendar, we have 2017-9. Any desire to pull that from the informal? No? Okay. Item 14, resolutions, there are none. Item 15, presentations from the gallery on other topics. All individuals limited to five minutes, I'm sorry, three minutes without exception. We have one signed up this evening, Velma Steinman.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you. Velma Steinman, 2217, West Edgewood, Jefferson City. The reason why I'm here is because there has been an issue with the pool at the house next door to us on West Edgewood, and it stands four foot tall, a little over four foot tall, and it is a permanent, was a permanent pool. And there's no fence around the pool. And according to the city ordinance, under planning and zoning, the safety part for swimming pools, Section 1529 fences, it reads, "Any person owning or operating a permanently constructed swimming pool or permanently constructed family pool, whether public or private, shall provide and maintain a fence or wall not less than four foot in height, having no openings or holes larger than six inches in any dimension except for doors and gates, which fence shall completely surround," excuse me, and which the, excuse me, which fence shall completely surround the pool or the property on which the pool is located. All doors and gates shall be fastened and locked at any time and all times that the pool is not in use or attended." And that's under ordinance 9, excuse me, ordinance 9430. And I have received a message from Bob Sinova, and he stated, the voicemail, that because the pool was four foot high, and that the only entrance into the pool was from the neighbor's deck, that that did not meet the fence requirement, that it met the fence requirement. According to the ordinance, it does not, at least in my interpretation, does not meet the fence requirement, and so that's why I'm here for interpretation of that. Because we all know, children will be children, and where there's a will, there's a way, and where there's a swimming pool, that's an open invitation.
Thank you, Mrs. Steinman, and we'll plan to have city staff talk to you about that, and Mr. Sanders and his department will talk to you about the details of that issue. I believe you're aware of it, your department is, so.
I would appreciate it, because I'd just like a little clarification.
Okay, so we'll make sure before you leave that Mr. Sanders has your contact information, and he will talk to you about it.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Item 16, council and staff discussion of presentation topics. Any discussion this evening? All right. Item 17, any new business? 18, any unfinished business? 19, approval of closed session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Stain.
Hasi?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?